Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schiffern and I'm calling the meeting to order of the Planning Board for June 10th, 2024 at 6:32 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I want to thank all of our first responders again and all of our veterans and those currently serving in the military. We owe you a debt of gratitude. This meeting is being recorded and it will be uploaded to the Townsend YouTube channel. I do not believe I have any additions or resolutions. Thank you. 1.5 Review and Approve Meeting Minutes of May 6th, 2024 and May 20th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 6th and May 20th of 2024.
I second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And Beth, you took into consideration what was being added to you? Okay, thank you. So hearing none.
Roll call vote.
Carol Hoffs says yes.
Robert Theryn, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much.
Do we have a quorum?
We have a quorum, yes. There are three of five.
Okay.
And Andrew did let me know that it's his home, so I asked him if he could join us about 7:00 for the vote if he's able. It's not mandatory because we have, we have a quorum that we can do it, but if he can join us, that would be great. Yeah. Want to give your administrative report, 1.6. We have four minutes before we see our appointment.
Okay, so just, I'm just going to take this from the Land Use Monthly Report. An update, 39 and 0 Greenfield Road, as you recall, at town meeting. The Planning Board voted unanimously in favor of the proposal and provided a written report to town meeting. And I further submitted the required forms to the town clerk for it to process through the state. Let's see. So stormwater certificate of completion for 27 Scales Lane is ongoing. However, there was a site visit made and the site looks great and everything has stabilized. And so we are waiting for a final go-ahead to, for the board to ask on that certificate of completion. And there was a letter mailed to 22 Main Street, emails sent to 22 Main Street regarding that ongoing project. And the plan is to invite the owner to the June 24th meeting to talk to the board. And that's something we're going to have to take care of this week. So the draft, the decision has been drafted for 108 to 112 West Meadow Road. The board received an application for major restricted development and associated stormwater management permit for 108 Pittsburgh Road. The Mark Townsend shovel bus, the Board of Selectmen has approved the change of operation mode from starting July 1st, from regular scheduled drop-offs and pickups to a on-call or a demand, on-demand service for users. They're implementing that over the next few weeks, making that transfer over.
That's it. Well, you talk a second now.
Well, Mark is going to be helping us with that in terms of their website. They'll have that update there, the schedule update and the phone number for riders to call. You have to call 24 hours in advance. And again, if they're going in on Monday, that means you have to call on Friday and set it up.
Okay.
It's going to work, same schedule, same hours, pick-ups and drop-offs. Just that you need to take that extra step to call them and make sure the bus comes.
Okay, understood.
That are regularly taking it now. We'll get a flyer from the bus driver to let them know that it'll be changed on.
Okay. And so it'll be on our website?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Is that it? Thank you, Beth. 6:40, yeah, we have an appointment. And Chaz Sexton-Gerardian is a candidate for Planning Board Associate Member. Okay. Did you want to say a few words?
Outside of, I've served on the Planning Board before. I've actually served on the Planning Board before. The reason being is that we have a lot of things going on in town right now and there had been some meetings that there wasn't a quorum. You know, that the Planning Board is important and it needs to be quorumed. So I was hoping to stay on the board so we find some other interests and others who would like to step in. I just don't want to impede the work that you guys are doing with everything. And that would just be for the associate, so.
Great. And very appreciative.
I do, I do, I do have to add one thing. I did check with the Ethics Commission in regards to the position and there is no ethics issues involved with that.
No Board of Selectmen?
When I'm, when I'm, if I'm called upon to be a member, it would be nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. And you're still our liaison?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, it makes sense really if you're willing to be able to fill in, you know?
Well, I understand it's frustration for, for you guys when you want to hold a meeting or have a discussion and you can't vote on it. I also see it as, I think more importantly, the residents not prolonging the process because it does seem to be timely sometimes. So I want to make sure that they get adjudicated quickly. I think that's my most important thing.
Okay. I appreciate that. So we would need, or I'll entertain a motion to put Chaz's name forward to the Board of Selectmen to be appointed. You have to be appointed to the affiliate position, the associate position, I'm sorry. So motion to.
Okay, to appoint Chaz Sexton-Gerardian as an Associate Member of the Planning Board to the Board of Selectmen?
For approval?
For approval.
I second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carol Hoffs says yes.
Robert Theryn, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you guys on the 18th.
Yeah, the 18th appointment hearing, if you will, is June 18th. And that's a joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen for a vote. A final vote.
Oh, that's, oh, I was wondering why I had two days. All right, so that's the Selectmen's meeting for the appointments. Okay. Because, um, let's see, the next one's at 6:45. If you don't mind, I'd like to go right down to 4.1. If you don't mind. Under correspondence, we also have a voluntary response form from Lance J. McNally, candidate for Planning Board Member. He has stepped forward and is willing to take the empty vacancy seat.
Who is?
Lance.
Lance.
Okay.
Our previous chairman.
Good.
And we have served with them, Chaz has served with them.
Oh, great.
You know, and this, this may help especially this time of year because Andrew is.
Busy.
Busy. Meaning hanging. So he's got to do it during the light hours.
What's he doing?
Hanging.
Oh, hanging. I thought you said hanging.
I said hanging.
Luckily, I happened to.
Instead of hanging, yes.
Like hey, okay.
All right.
I will entertain a motion to please to send to the Board of Selectmen Lance McNally.
I'll make a motion to send Lance McNally's name as a Planning Board Member for approval to the Board of Selectmen.
And that's until the next election in April of '25. Chaz's appointment, just to be clear, will be through June 30th of '25.
It won't start until July 1st.
It starts until, yeah, July 1st.
Until my appointment ends.
In '25?
Yeah. I think I'm good till '25. I don't know when in '25.
For election.
Whatever.
You're 26.
Am I 26?
I'm 25.
Oh, yeah, 25. I'm 26, okay.
Would you second and vote?
Yep.
Yep, there's a second. And roll call vote on Lance.
Carol Hoffs says yes.
Robert Theryn, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. So both those names will be on the 18th. Okay.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, okay.
The Charters' Boardman meeting.
Yeah. And I won't be in town.
Does that have to be a joint meeting? No.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
It does?
Everybody votes, I would call this eight in the poll. But yeah.
So that's the 18th?
Yes. At 7:00 PM.
At 7 o'clock?
Yep.
Which means 3 o'clock. 4 o'clock where I am. So I can do that.
Okay.
And I have a 2 o'clock. I actually have two meetings that day, but yeah, I can do 4 o'clock. So if it's like, would that be right at like five minutes after or are you doing that? When, when should I plan on that?
I'm checking now.
Okay, thank you.
Then I'll let Andrew know.
Okay, then that's 7:00 PM, right? Only 18th, okay.
We just need a majority.
Yeah.
Of the board.
Yep.
So if I'm on and you guys get on, we should be fine until we get the two more appointments.
Yeah.
And do we have our applicant? I, I have.
Yes, 7 o'clock.
I can be on.
At 7 o'clock.
Your time?
Yes.
So that's 4 o'clock. Fine, thank you very much. Okay. We now have 6:45. And this is a continuation of a public hearing for the right stuff here. Sorry. 6:45 continuation of public hearing for 108 and 112 West Meadow Road. Applicant Philip Colometta. Hope I said that right.
Chris Stoddard is here, the engineer of record.
Okay, thank you.
I actually do believe Phil is on, but I think he's traveling, so hopefully I can answer all the questions.
Okay, Chris. And that's all I have to do. I don't have to read anything else. Okay, thank you. Just, you received the, our draft decision?
Correct, yes.
Okay, do you have any questions about that or does something not look right to you?
Nope. No, I've been going through it here for the last few minutes and everything seems to be in order. I don't see any issues for our.
Okay. Jessica's not on, is she?
Yes, she is.
She is Jessica.
Yep.
Hello.
Just wondering if you were able to read the decision, the draft decision for the applicant?
Yeah, I breezed through it quickly. We have, I have a few just sort of edit or administrative edits, like little typos and things, but nothing of substance to, that I recommend changing.
Okay. So we could just agree that those edits be done. And the other thing was on legal counsel's opinion and personally, I agree with his opinion of the let's see, right-of-entry acknowledgement. Because there's two names on the deed to the property, both owners of the property should be signing this.
Okay, and I believe just George came down and signed. Is that correct? Okay. That, that, that's not an issue. We can have, we can have his wife, I think, yeah, Melanie. She, we can have her sign it.
Right. So above, on, on this form, it says property owner George and Melanie Kimball. But the statement says, "I, George." And it's only signed by George. So legally, we really do have to have all owners sign that.
Yeah, that's, that's not an issue.
Okay. And I think so between Jessica's comments and our brief review, not doing every exhibit, Jessica's gone over it. And Chris doesn't have any objections except for the one thing that we're adding. And that is that for that document to have both names and both signatures.
Yeah.
With the right of entry. Okay. Having said all that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the decision for 108, 110, and 112 West Meadow Road.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the decision for the stormwater management permit for 108, 110, and 112 West Meadow Road.
I second that motion.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hoffs says yes.
Robert Theryn, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Can you elaborate on signing?
It is incorporated, but you could, could you actually make the motion that was written in the decision so it can be consistent?
Oh, it's ready to be.
Is it right up here?
Yes, right above where you sign it, so it can make that motion. Yes. With the understanding that you and Jessica will do whatever needs to be tweaked. And do I have to add that we want that form changed?
Well, I, you can. You know, that's.
Can we just note it in the minutes then?
Yeah, it's going to be noted.
Okay. Okay. So what I heard was that on this date, June 10th, 2024, Carol Hostess motioned and Robert Theryn seconded to issue a major stormwater management permit to Philip Colometta for 108 to 112 West Meadow Road for a period of two years with special conditions listed herein. I wanted to mention the second, the second by the board.
Read the special conditions? I mean, and then you can edit on special conditions. There's three.
Well, there's nothing else in the motion I just made.
Right, above it.
Above how? Oh, four.
Well, there's one, two, three.
And then there's a number, there's a number.
No, but it's the motion.
Oh, it's the motion. Oh, that's weird.
Okay.
All right.
To be contained within this motion, one, the stormwater management permit does not include coverage of any construction activity occurring on 112 West Meadow Road. Assessors math number four, block 20, block one. Two, once it is, once the certificate of completion for the as-built stormwater management system has been issued, the system owner shall operate and maintain the stormwater infrastructure according to the operation and maintenance plan in perpetuity per the Stormwater Regulations 175- for a perpetual inspection and maintenance. Three, the applicant and/or owner as appropriate shall grant to the town of Townsend per Stormwater Regulation 175-45, Section B, a stormwater management license for inspections and maintenance defined as a license sufficient in location and extent to access the property in all areas used for off-site stormwater control in order to facilitate inspections and to perform required maintenance.
Yes, those are all things that are, you already have that. If, if the board decides that that acknowledgement, that right-of-way, a right-of-entry acknowledgement is sufficient, it's still in there. It doesn't mean that they have to provide another one. It's simply a statement of, it's right out of the regulations.
Okay.
Even right above it, it says the applicant has provided all applicable documents needed, so.
Right, but we've already said we're not accepting this document.
Okay. So then.
We want both, both owners.
Perhaps that.
To sign.
Yeah, that would be a good time to revise that special condition with exactly what you want.
Okay. So after my last statement of control in order to facilitate inspections and to perform required maintenance, the applicant shall provide a right-of-entry acknowledgement form that includes all owners that are listed on the deed and to be signed by all owners. Okay.
And then maybe do that as amended motion if you want.
The statement that I just made is added as an amendment to the original motion.
Wouldn't that be added before?
Or it's just that you have something to add?
I guess we just added it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we just added four.
It's probably benign, if you will. It's simply out of the regulations, so yeah. You can add that as number two.
On item number three, the last sentence, in order to facilitate, facilitate inspections and to perform required maintenance, shouldn't that be to inspect, to facilitate inspections and to supervise required maintenance? We're not performing any maintenance.
No, but they, they are.
Right. That's the one question for clarity here.
Oh, no, it says the applicant and/or owner as appropriate.
The applicant's going to take care of. This, this isn't like one of those, this is not an easement for the town.
No.
Or the town coming on property. The inspections are, are separate, but I, I think it refers to this document. Am I wrong?
Yeah.
No, it refers to this document in that if the property owner has to go on to his property to, because of the stormwater drainage.
Oh, 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 that has something to do with the town?
No.
It does, actually.
I'm sorry, I forgot that.
It replaces the easement language that was originally in the regulation. So in the event that the town needs to go in.
This is for his property.
The only reason they would need to go in is if the system failed.
Right.
The owner was not, you know, taking care of it and it was impacting the public way. Let's say sediment all over West Meadow Road and it was a public, you know, impact.
Right, and this was a complication with two property owners there, or two houses there.
Right, and this agreement is with the owner of 108. 110 is not on that.
That's right. That's what we can do.
It's right out of the regulations, so that we, we revise some of this for later.
Okay.
Are we good? Jessica, Chris, are we good?
I'm good.
Yep. I think as long as you guys get it, we're good to move on, yeah.
Okay, so.
The process, did you amend it? And then you vote on it again, is that how you're doing it? You meant in your motion or how is that?
What do you, what do you want us? Whatever you want, whether we amend it or it's number four.
Okay, you can amend your previous motion to include.
Number four.
Number four that you had stated. I have it written down.
All right.
And then re-vote it, just to make sure that I can write it. I can't write it unless you say it. Let's just put it that way.
Okay.
Just say that you amend the motion to add number four as, as stated. Because I already stated it.
I make the motion to, would then, to add number four.
To the motion you already stated.
To the previous motion I already stated.
And do I have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? Are you all set? Beth?
Yeah.
Carol Hoffs says yes.
Well, Robert?
Robert Theryn, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night, folks.
All right.
Would you like to know about signatures? I'm going to need tomorrow to brush it up and actually issue the permit itself, which is a separate document. So I can get that done tomorrow. And if you guys want to come back and turn it.
It just dropped me in. Yes, when it's ready, just let me know and I can run over.
Yes, I should be able to show it by tomorrow.
Well, I'm coming to vote tomorrow morning.
All right, yeah, me too.
Tomorrow morning? Oh, that means I got to stay after the meeting and work on it?
No.
No, tomorrow, Tuesday. Yeah, actually. I'm going to vote later. Well, that could be good because if you won't stay all night, then I'll be here at 8.
You're going to be here at 8?
You'll be here at 8 to go vote.
I didn't think so. All right, I was trying to help you out.
Okay. So 6:45 is done. I bet I was.
Do you want to, I don't know, listen to the question 3.1. I found 175-27 in the regulations that was, it's really important that you update it now because we have changed, you had changed your fees. And when I looked at that Regulation 145-27.
Yep.
I realized that all the old fees were in it. I just didn't know.
So that's like a housekeeping thing.
Yeah, that's definitely a housekeeping thing. It just, we were going in order and it just didn't occur to me. It's about consultants. So if you're, it's more employment of outside consultants. I would recommend that you take a few minutes and just edit that. That's right out of the, oh, sorry.
I have one of those here, here.
You do, okay, so.
Well, I have this.
If you're going to read for that, I will, I will work it out. If you want to, I think you could eliminate the fees on the second page, right? And just say, it's as noted in the appendixe.
Yes. We could eliminate all of 175-27.
Of 27?
Yeah, 175-27 fees.
Oh.
Yeah.
All expenses incurred by the town for processing the applicant, well, wait a minute. For processing an application shall be borne by the applicant. Whenever any extraordinary expense occurs that is not covered by the fee structure, such items may be.
So we're going to put this in a general fee plan?
Well, all of these are already in the fee schedule.
Right.
A separate one. So we need to say.
Delete item X? Or?
No, 175-25, the statement A needs to stay there, right? All expenses incurred by the town for processing an application shall be borne by the applicant.
Exactly.
That's what that's getting, needs to stay there. But whenever any extraordinary expense occurs that is not covered by the fee structure, such items may be. What, I would just put something like, see fee schedule and, and, and not have any of this. Does that have to go to town meeting?
Take H and just write it, you know? The following application fees have been, or are found in, you know.
The appendixes.
I just realized that they, we should do this in conjunction on 75-26, which is about.
Implementation of outside, yes.
But that shouldn't change, that's, that's a state.
If one, if 175-27 fees is only in conjunction for, because it doesn't say that, only in conjunction with appointment of outside spending? Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry, I see it right there, you're talking 175-27.
Fees, A.
A, okay, yeah.
So that same sentence has to stay.
Yes.
And then.
Yeah.
You, just the comment, I think, see fee schedule.
Okay, is it just H? Okay.
What's H?
175-27 H.
But that's, oh, no.
Because it's separate, you have it as 175-26 and then that goes A, B, C, D, E, F.
Yeah.
And then, then you have separate, 175-27 has an A.
Yeah. But you didn't get the rest of 140, 175-27, there's two, there should be another page.
Oh, I hate the backside, two-sided.
Yeah, you did look at the backside, how much of this do we need to keep?
Hmm. Well, there's a lot of wording here, but.
I, I think all of it, should just make it simple and just see, was it appendixy? Yeah, this is all like, just get rid of all, to me, just get rid of all of it and just say, see appendix. Is it E for the fee schedule?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there is a lot of stuff in there that really doesn't need to be in.
Right, and so if, whatever application needs, all the fees are in the fee schedule, you would just tell them what fees apply.
Yeah, exactly, there are.
To whatever they're doing.
So G, the policy of the board to waive application that's supplemental fees for applications submitted on behalf of the town, but not the border department, or the regional school district, or other town agencies that are largely financially separate from the town, nor any project for which revenue other than the town's property tax or normal state aid is applicable.
I would get, I would just get rid of everything, just get rid of it all.
Yeah.
I mean, if the board, if, if we know as a town that we're not going to do this, we're not waiving fees to these entities, okay? But if another situation happens, for whatever reason, say it's a negotiable tool with the developer, I don't know. The board can decide to waive the fee.
Right.
Right, even if it's not in the regulations, though.
What do you mean?
Well, if you, if you delete G, for instance.
Yeah.
Are you?
Yeah, but G's very specific.
Yeah, I know.
We know what this is.
Yeah.
But do you want to just make one statement that says, um, fees should be waived, you know, that we don't do it for anything that's municipal or.
I think, I, I mean, if you want, I can run it by town council, because he had some good suggestions for definitive subdivisions in terms of what to take out, it will very, you know, heavy with, you know, this section editing.
He'll ask you if we could get rid of all of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for.
I always recognize you.
I was ready, ready to jump off the cliff here. You guys had in one of your.
Which one?
Adam's team. You had in one of your, I think you guys put it in there that you had the ability to waive fees when, when you felt it was necessary, that's really all you need to.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's earlier in the regs, right?
Yeah, it's, it's one of the earlier things we've said, you know, is that the discretion of the board or something?
Right, and applicant can always request it.
You know, because something is omitted does not mean it's permitted.
Correct.
So that's why.
So I think that the less is more.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Get rid of this.
Because you, you're putting in, to my, to my understanding now, recommend, that you guys are putting in a whole new fee schedule, correct?
Yeah, it's already there, it's already approved.
Right, so it adds an.
This is an oversight.
So you use the first, first sentence that you said and say, all fees, see appendix, whatever it is. Fee or fee schedule, whatever it is.
That way we don't have to review fees every year.
Correct, and then on, on the bottom, just make sure it says that the planning board has discretion to waive fees at any time, or however you guys add it worded for your other thing.
Yeah, I need to actually put that on the fee schedule, too.
Yeah, that's what I said, put that right on the fee schedule.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's a really good idea, I'll just have her call.
Yeah. Okay, so let's look at that after you've talked to Adam about it.
Okay.
And because, just to remind me again, does this have to go before a body or it's done?
It will, once, this is part of the whole review and as you recall, it does go through your vote and then the public hearing again.
Right.
So we can.
But only the public hearing, only if.
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't have to.
Yes.
It doesn't have to go to town meetings?
No, the regulations are just a public hearing and we can collect them and stack them up and then like last time, I think.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Fifteen different regs.
Okay, okay.
We'll do catch, um, that's, uh, very clear.
But I agree with you.
Yeah. So, hi.
Hi.
I recognize you.
From Zoom, from the, uh, from the TAs meeting we had, I'm Joseph Boyle from NRPC.
Yes. Um, work members, if you want to introduce yourselves to.
Hi, I'm Carol Hosses.
Hi, Carol.
Robert, Darren.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Can you name Jazz, one of our selecting?
Right now I'm liaison.
A liaison to this board and that.
And that, hi.
Okay, so we do have you on the agenda tonight. Um. Um, seven fifteen, yeah.
At seven.
Two point three.
Hold it.
It's not a public hearing, so we can, we can start early, right?
Uh, yeah, it's an appointment, it's, you know, there are still people coming on, I, I noticed Veronica Cal is paying on.
Oh, who else is on?
Possibility of state rep, or, or somebody beyond, so I suggest, I would suggest that you do so.
Okay, all right, is that a, what?
Yes, that's.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I think I may for two minutes um, tell you a little bit about. This may or may not start something, but, um, the billion dollar bond for infrastructure that's coming out, there was a, there was a brief, um, uh, talk about, well, when this, the transfer tax, same guy that was talking about the transfer tax. And, um, first of all, it's over five years and it's one billion a year. And what I heard, not from the guy speaking today, but what I heard from our, our legislative person at the State Association was that that particular bond is for South Shore. It's not for any place else in the state. Right, wake up. And they've been working on that, that's been coming along for 10 years and just coming out with paid for studies to build the infrastructure for additional housing on the South Shore.
On the South Shore.
South Shore.
Surprising to you, how long did it take us to get half acres?
Nothing in government surprises me about how long it takes.
Takes forever and they waste so much money.
Yeah. So, um, yeah. I don't, the other thing that I, I was going to try to talk about today, but I didn't get out, was the thing, okay, ADU, what's ADU?
Accessory dwelling unit. It's accessory apartment.
Okay, and the new bylaw that they're adding to the legislature regarding ADUs?
In the, in, in the housing bond bill, there is language authorizing ADUs by right. The one that's just passed the House.
By right?
By right.
By right.
Single family dwelling.
In single family dwelling, uh, yeah, single family homeowner by right with limits like, uh, 800 square foot size and, or.
Same as what we have actually, it's 900 square feet.
Is that bond bill 84459? Is that the same one?
I don't know the number, I, I do not know, uh, the name off the top of my head, but it's the six billion dollar housing bond bill that was just passed by the House.
Yes. And, and the, uh, the same guy from Gardner was talking about how they were both, the rep from Westminster and Gardner was there today and they both had voted for this bill. But this same bill could, and mostly they were saying because of the ADU. The same bill um, is the MBTA community bill, they're tied together.
Oh, bad news.
Well, the MBTA community bill is in the 2021 version of this bond bill.
And this is added to that, right? What, what they changed now is added to that, the ADUs by right, single family.
I don't know if that was, actually, I haven't seen the language, I don't know if that's added to the, to, um, 3A, the section 3A, which is the MBTA law, or if it's in another part of the zoning act.
Okay, so for us.
I wouldn't think it was, actually, I wouldn't think it was connected to the MBTA law at all because it's statewide. It applies to, uh.
Yeah, that is statewide.
So I don't think that's.
That is statewide.
An MBTA connection.
But still, we have to zone for it. And that's not, and that particular thing is not, uh, do you know if it's just for relatives only?
It is not for relatives only.
Okay, and so that does not have to be affordable, does not have to be affordable. So this, this is really a break for anybody who wants to have, um, has a big house, wants to have a separate apartment, wants to still live there, it doesn't even have to be a family, they can rent out the house and live in the accessory. Right?
Right, they could rent out the house and live in the accessory.
If they want to.
The question at hand, the question at hand is we already have permitted AD units that were tied.
To affordable.
Yes, to affordable and fair housing.
And people.
Will that eliminate those, those people don't have to do that anymore.
Well, those are families.
Let the bill, let the bill go through first, because it's still being ratified, so I would say, wait till the bill goes first before we can really.
But that's why I wanted to talk to them, if Margaret gets on, you know, because, um, we would have, we could add units, maybe not in the MBTA manner with the 15,000 or whatever they want. Um, but we could, it, it makes sense when you have such a housing shortage to be able to add a unit to your house.
Right.
If you want it, and, and if the board has approves it.
Well, the question that I would have is that if they are getting away with the affordable portion of it, that, that would eliminate a lot of affordable units that are currently on the housing inventory.
We, we need to know exactly how much that is, okay? Because the ones that are on the inventory are affordable because they're family.
Right.
Okay? Family, we know what happens, family dies. And in order for that to stay affordable, well, and maybe, because I don't even know if that one that I'm talking about and you know about, I don't know if that was considered on the affordable list, although they were willing to do it. But the cost, the cost is prohib, it's cost prohibitive for somebody in a single family home to do an affordable unit by the state's definition.
Yes, I would, that, actually, that was one of the points I was going to come here and make, uh, make to you tonight. Do the, uh, the affordable ADUs to qualify to your subsidized housing inventory, I don't really see a way that unless you run into a person in here or there who's a great altruist, that, that can really be made to work without a subsidy somewhere. It can, they say subsidize, called this subsidized housing inventory for a reason, it generally, uh, it, it, because you generally have to put some sort of subsidy in it in order to reach these price points.
The only subsidy that is being done in those units by the state, the way the state law is right now.
Yeah.
Is by the homeowner.
Yeah.
Because they have to pay another agency to do the lottery.
Yeah.
So it is not affordable to do.
Which, by the way, makes me think that, that, um, the case you were thinking about where it's the family in the unit, that's probably not one of your affordable units, because you're not allowed to have preference for family in those lot, most lotteries and stuff.
They're not, no.
No, but.
So that one must have been, uh, Martin, must not have been on your SHI.
No, Veronica has a question.
Yes, Veronica.
Um, I'm curious then, what is the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and just a plain old apartment?
An accessory dwelling unit is a type of apartment, it is a category of apartment. You could have an apartment in a three family, you could have an apartment in a, in a high-rise building, yeah, you could have an apartment in two family. An accessory dwelling unit is a type of apartment that's, uh, an accessory use on a house with a single family home, there's a second, smaller unit. It's a category of apartment. We'll just put it as that way.
Yeah, sure. Did you want to start the, um, discussion now at 7:20?
Yes, I think we already were. We're in discussing with Mr. Doyle. Um, why don't you start your discussion?
Okay, so in, in those categories, okay? We're well aware of the hardship situations with families, that's what I, now we're talking about, does this include guest houses, uh, would this include, um, you know, other type of short-term occupants?
So, oh, you're worried about the, uh, the, yeah, something.
Having a bed and breakfast in one unit?
And then, and that's going on Airbnb, right? Um, well, ADU ordinance can regulate, uh, short, short-term rentals. A town can have a short-term rental ordinance, they could apply that short-term rental units, ordinance to all of the town rental housing in town, or they could apply it to some of the rental housing in town.
I don't think we have that, do we?
Seasoned.
Is there any legislation that we know of right now that burdens a potential homeowner to mass fair housing? Is there any legal language that links that now?
That links what?
In other words, control of the tenant.
Oh, um, I, somebody who builds an ADU and has a tenant that they're renting it to would be subject to the same tenant laws as anybody else who owns an apartment or works in that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
It's still fair housing?
Even if you don't have a license just to rent or sell, you know, real estate, if you're a landlord, fair housing plays on everyone, everyone.
So.
There's no discrimination allowed.
So if you have a poor tenant, too bad for you.
Right.
Tough to be a landlord today, I'll tell you. So fair housing applies and you, if, if somebody who was affected by it.
Let me get this right, this is now an established law?
Um, well, it's only passed the House, um, it would still have to pass the Massachusetts Senate and then be signed by the governor.
And it still can change.
And it's still, yeah, yeah. And it's still, yeah, it, yes, it's, yeah, it still can change. It's just going to the Senate now.
No, fair housing won't change once the bill is out.
But the bill including ADUs by right, it might, uh, might, might or might not make it through with the ADUs.
Is that a separate bill or is it all integrated?
It's all integrated, but, uh, they can, but, I mean, there's a thousand subsections of this law, I'm sure. And, uh, the Senate's gonna change some things and we'll see what they change.
I think it's a good thing because it does allow for additional housing units, which we don't have.
That's, that's the carriage.
Okay, but it's, like anything else, it's not easy to accomplish your goals. You still have to go by the rules. Well, most people have to go by the rules.
Whose rules is the question?
Their laws.
Whose laws?
The government's.
Yes, that's the problem.
And it's all in favor of the tenants, so beware when you wanna be a landlord.
No, this is, this is government control of housing on your personal property. I don't care how you look at it.
So don't put, don't put an ADU on your property.
So is that discrimination or not, right?
What, did I put in an ADU?
She has a house, I have a house. We both wanna put ADUs in. She's acceptable. We're having control of that AD unit, subject to mass fair housing. I am not. Okay, she doesn't live there per se, all right? But, so I do. This is my neighbor. This is right across the wall from me. And I have no control of who occupies that space if there's any disturbance or problems with that face because now I have to deal with mass fair housing.
Not exactly.
There's a lottery as to who's going to be there.
That's only if they do it as an affordable unit though.
No.
If they do it as an affordable unit, it's a lottery. If it's your, if it's a market rate unit, you're just a regular, you're just a regular landlord taking applications.
No lottery. And also, if you live in the dwelling, there are things that you can, if you will, discriminate against within a two-family, unless they've changed this as well. Non-smokers, pets. You can do this because you have allergies or you get sick or whatever. Whatever you can substantiate, um.
So you're telling me I should worry about this?
I would be able to have smokers or, or pets if I was in a two-family or had an accessory apartment. I couldn't have that. Physically, I couldn't have that.
So are you telling me I should worry about this?
I never tell anybody not to worry.
No, no, I'm just, I, I, I need to be sure I feel right about it.
If you're gonna do it, then you need to do diligence and read up on what you.
Right.
Being a landlord is not for everybody. The vast majority of single-family homeowners do not want to have a tenant on their property.
The main caveat to this is by right, which means.
By right, if you wanted.
The, the way the current, the, the way the current law is, is that if you have an accessory dwelling, it is either with family or it's affordable, according to what we have in our bylaws.
Correct.
We have those two choices.
Right.
By right means it gets rid of the affordability clause so that you may rent to anybody you choose and not have to make any affordability.
So that by right.
And you can't be denied. If Board of Health approves and everything else, you have a right to build an ADU. Yeah, and let me just, Veronica's had her hand up for a long time. Veronica?
I, I guess my, I'm, I'm the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and I guess my question is, so you have ADUs by right, that's fine, but if it removes the affordability piece of it, how do we, um, provide affordable housing in town through, um, through accessory apartments or apartments even that aren't big complexes? I guess our ADU bylaw, and I was on the planning board when that was, um, amended. The idea was you, you could have an accessory apartment, special permit. However, if you're not doing, it's intended for family. If you're not renting to family or you don't have, you know, um, then there's the affordability piece of it, which helps the town out. So it was a, you know, a two-way street. So these accessory dwelling units by right then become market rate. And it, how does that help the, the person who needs housing?
Okay, so let me explain something to you, just a minute. I spoke about this before. Townsend rentals are market rate because we are Middlesex County. So they're market rate anyway. The problem is, if there's no, nobody in their right mind, if it wasn't a family member, is gonna go affordable because it mandate, the state mandates that you use, what, I forget the name of the agency, to do your lottery. And it's, and I, I talked to them, and it's anywhere from maybe ten thousand if you're lucky, fifteen to twenty-five thousand to hold a lottery. That's why it works for like where Copper, where they did that in Copperfield, the developer did that, Copper Smith. Because it was a developer who was gonna have several units. Somebody in a single-family dwelling cannot afford to meet the state standards of affordable on an accessory apartment unless it's a family member, because then they don't have to have the lottery.
So the, the only way it's effective is when you have multi-family housing.
Yeah.
And you allow a certain percentage affordable to give the developer a break on whatever the cost is. So that's the subsidy.
Or a density bonus or something like that.
And that's another appointed agency, by the way, that's making money.
And, and we do have the, um, the possibility in our bylaws for a density bonus. Um, I don't think it's, or to require that there be an affordable piece to it.
Yeah, we have, we have that now.
Been used other than in a development like Copper Smith. It's never been used. I, I don't know, I guess I'm puzzled.
It was used there. That was, that was a, um, that was part of the negotiations. I wasn't on the planning board then, but it took like seven years.
Was that a forty B?
Yes.
Yes, it's a forty B, so that's a little different.
Is one affordable program amongst others.
Yeah, yeah, I was asking if this one, this Copperfield, was that built under the law?
Forty B permit?
Yeah.
It was a forty B.
Okay.
It was a forty B, but if you read our bylaws, we do, uh, the planning board has the option of requiring a certain percentage in anything being affordable. And, um, I, I don't think that's ever been, um, put into play.
I'm not really familiar with development patterns in Townsend. Uh, the, well, this, uh, inclusionary zoning where a percentage of the units built are required to be affordable.
There aren't any.
Those generally.
We don't have inclusionary zoning. We have optional inclusionary zoning.
Right. Those typically kick in at, you have to provide ten percent for any project with twelve or more units, with ten or more units.
Right.
Um, are you having multi-unit subdivisions built here?
No.
That would, no, you, you're.
Well, we have, uh, I mean, up on North End Road, um, there were, how many? Five or six houses up there. Um, you know, there have been a few, not that many recently.
No.
Right, so, uh, the question, the question I was asked is how to, how the town can provide affordable, um, housing. Um, the first thing I wanna say is that specifically ADUs are not gonna be an effective way to provide affordable housing.
No.
The affordable housing programs are just not designed for individual units. They're designed for larger projects. I was struggling today trying to figure out a way to maybe provide a subsidy using low-income housing tax credit, complete dead end. It's not, not even worth explaining to you what the, uh, how, how that would work. It, you know, ADUs, ADUs are very, can be very helpful in our housing affordability crisis in addressing the supply side and helping to fix the market.
Wow.
But they're not an affordable program.
Right.
They can't work in an affordable program. And quite frankly, I think that, uh, sometimes people would want to stick an affordable, uh, uh, affordable element onto an ADU law specifically as a poison pill, because they know it would make it impossible to actually build the ADUs.
Well, I, I think there's a lot to talk about of affordable housing, no matter what kind of legislation you apply it to, okay? And, uh, wha, all of it in terms of government definition is subsidized housing somewhere, okay? Now, currently, what is going on is they want these, what, small home things now?
Tiny homes.
What do they call?
Tiny homes.
Tiny homes. Well, it seems to me that affordable housing can come from the construction industry in terms of construction systems and technology, okay? I know that personally. Um, then as far as communities going, instead of being confronted with high-density housing things, we don't have any provision in our zoning bylaw for tiny house situations, okay? Which is the same kind of topic as an ADU unit, kinda, yeah, so.
Can I, can I jump in here and, and say that maybe you're not aware of it? Because I know the Housing Authority has talked about cluster housing, they've talked about cluster neighborhoods, and they've talked about tiny, tiny houses.
We're talking about it. We don't have to provide it.
That's right.
Right, so I'm trying to get this to a point where the local community can develop its own method of providing that. And in terms of, I mean, I've been dealing with affordable housing for generations, okay? And, for example, in the town of Townsend here, okay? I had a program where I go to ten towns and say, what is your distressed properties in town? On the tax report. So if I could get thirty units from ten towns, free each, I could produce mass housing there, cost-effectively, just the same way, uh, without a subsidy. Um, so I could go to every one of those towns and get a waiver on permits and stuff. I could go to Anderson Window and order car, car, train car loads of windows direct from the manufacturer without any middleman, okay? So their technologies there, um, that's how you do affordable housing through the industry, not through legislation like this. It's, uh, and we all end up paying for it and we pay a premium. Um, so, I mean, fortunately, I have that awareness that most of the public doesn't. But, um, but in our own town here, we can do zoning ourselves.
Right, so let's talk about zoning.
All right.
How, how do we get to some more friendly, uh, overlay district, multifamily?
Okay.
Um, I mean, this, that's where we wanna go, something progressive, not. Definitely, we need help with something that will be palatable to our community.
Right, right. And so, um, the, uh, the, the MBTA law. Um, we've, we've been talking about affordable housing. The, um, MBTA Communities Act, it isn't an affordable housing program. They actually cap the amount of affordable housing that you were, that you're allowed to, um, require as part of it at ten percent. It's a market rate housing program. It's, was written to try to address the market conditions, the severe shortage, the severe housing shortage, particularly of rental housing that we have. And it's, it, it's really a different approach than, uh, the, than affordable housing laws. It's meant to loosen up the regulation that has squashed housing production. Uh, so particularly squashed rental housing production. Um, affordable, you know, subsidized affordable units are obviously not the only problem that we have with housing affordability in this state. There's also housing affordability problems for people who are ha, above the levels of qualifying for subsidized housing, but who are having trouble finding appropriate units, correct-size units. Um, about three weeks ago, Forbes Magazine's Real Estate Division came out with a study of the, um, rental housing markets in America. And they found that Worcester County metro area, which is basically, um, central Massachusetts, which we're a part, has the third most competitive rental housing market in America. They're looking at things like the number of units available per hundred thousand population. They found in, uh, Worcester County, ninety-four, uh, rental units were available for every hundred thousand population. And they looked at the rate of increases in rents. And taking into factors like that, they found that Worcester, uh, Worcester County metro statistical area was the third most competitive rental market in America. To put that in perspective, Greater Boston was twelfth. We all know there has been a real, real shortage of rental housing in this region for decades.
I could've told you that.
It hasn't gotten better since my wife and I couldn't afford, couldn't find a unit to rent twenty-five years ago. And, uh, in the meantime, the Greater Boston housing crisis has moved into the area. And now we're in a really bad spot. We have a severe shortage of, particularly of rental housing. And so that's what the MBTA law is about, the production of rental housing, market rate rental housing.
So we can give you a zoning bylaw, which we picked spots, you know, and everything is hypothetical. And as they said, even today at the Hill, um, you just need to have your bylaw in there. We know that you're not gonna build. Most, most, the guy said, most of you, and where you're gonna get this mandated bylaw.
Yep.
You're not gonna be, end up being able to build, and we know that because we don't have the infrastructure to do what they want us to do.
Again, all these things come to question and nobody provides an explanation, okay?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm here for. I'm here to, I'm here to help you.
Why?
Through this process.
Why does Townsend, because it's hooked by a boundary line with the great train depot in Pittsburgh, has to provide high-density housing?
Not high-density housing.
It's not?
No, it's not high-density.
What's fifteen units an acre?
It's a two-family house on ju, on just under six thousand square feet.
One two-family house?
One two, a, a two-family house on a lot of fifty-eight by a hundred. Works out to fifteen units an acre.
No, that's not how.
That is not clear, all right? I'm gonna tell you why, all right? So right now, this planning board has been working on three sites with consultants and everything provided by the state.
Large, large sites.
Large sites.
Right, I've seen the sites.
Right, so they vary up to forty acres, from twelve to forty acres.
Yep.
All right, so are you telling me if I take? And the mandate says how many units it has to be?
Yeah.
A hundred and eighty-seven.
How many is zoned for, yes.
Right, so in those three sites that we have narrowed down to, all right? If we take the forty-acre site and put all one hundred and eighty-seven units there is one scenario, okay? So the question is, the bigger the site, because it says the whole zoning district has, will allow fifteen units per acre, does that mean if we meet one hundred and eighty-seven units now with the forty acres, that there's extra acres left for another hundred and eighty-seven units?
You know what the answer to that is?
Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, only if, if you rezoned the entire, a larger parcel, yes.
So the question I need, uh, we need to present to our town is which of these parcels should we do? Should we do the smallest one? Should we do the smallest one? Do the biggest one? Because what's going to happen next? And the thing that upsets me the most is in just the last three months, they passed a legislation to subsidize these developers now, okay? So, isn't it ironic that we have this MBTA program that we're mandated on? And isn't it ironic that a year later, the government is giving subsidies for the developer, when in the beginning they say, "Don't worry, nothing's going to happen, because it's going to be too expensive for a developer to do anything in Townsend?"
Where is the money for the subsidy that's going? I didn't see that or hear that in any of the bills.
I'll show it to you.
So how much subsidy are they giving for Townsend?
It's not for Townsend specifically, it's to developers. All right? Now, the other question is, here we have a city of Pittsburgh, which is kind of a distressed community, you know, it's trying to survive economically. There's a lot of distressed property there. There's already high-density there. Wouldn't it seem logical that if you're going to benefit the MBTA and get people on mass transportation, you put them closest to where the train depot is, right? Not seven miles in the woods where we have to provide a portable bus or have everybody drive to the city of Pittsburgh to park in a parking garage that we have to subsidize? So, it's just, and the other thing that's radical? Who came up with fifteen units per acre? Nobody in the construction industry would ever use that number. Every housing unit is based on number two, or units of two. So, I don't know where this all came from, but it is, there's so much that could be done that's much better. And then, I worked diligently in our, this community here, trying to get something that would be compatible and palatable to our town. We have three distinct villages in this town. And any one of these mass things in it would change that whole image. So, I was trying to collect different areas of town that may have been distressed properties, or could be recycled for a new unit, to meet the one hundred and eighty-seven units. The whole concept, I was slapped in the face and told, "No, you can't do it. All has to be under one concentrated area." So, that's not cooperating with the community at all.
I'm gonna, let's get focused, okay? This is your report to us? Please, because, yeah, because we can all be frustrated with what the state has done and what we're being mandated for. But you do have something in front of us, and we should look at what the possibilities may be, okay?
I look at it too.
So you had seen the previous draft of this bylaw that Jonathan had drawn up. Jonathan's not working on this anymore.
I also see everything on the fifteen-unit thing crossed out.
Yeah, we can go by each one, one by one. But the basic premise, the big idea behind this, this change that I drew, is I don't think it is in the town's interest to preclude their MBTA district from being developed with singles, single-family homes, two-family homes, or smaller multifamilies. I don't think that you should draw, that your zoning should lock in the big townhouse campus type of development. That, sure, it needs to allow for that, if that's the direction that a developer wants to go. But it might be more consistent with your town's vision, and more appropriate for the site to have smaller buildings, and smaller scale. And the way that the bylaw had been written, it would have precluded that, and really steered your developers towards the big campus-type development.
Okay, so we were maybe falsely, I don't know, but I mean, I remember everything that Robert was just saying, thinking that we couldn't, that we were mandated to do this by the state.
You are required, you are mandated to allow multifamily housing in this district. You are not mandated to only allow multifamily housing. You can allow multifamily housing, and two-family housing, and single-family housing.
It doesn't say that.
So here's the thing, when they give you a minimum, a maximum that you're allowed to do, you can always build less than that. When you have a zone that allows up to, that allows single families, two families, and multifamilies, someone's allowed to build a single family. Think about your...
It's the density formula.
Yeah, the density.
Fifteen units per acre. How else can you interpret that?
You can interpret that as, you need to allow people to build at fifteen units per acre.
No, it's a minimum. It means, that's right.
It is not the minimum. People do not have to build at fifteen units per acre. These zoning has to allow developers to choose to build at fifteen units per acre if they want. But if they want to build at half that density, they're also allowed to.
So did we...
That's correct, okay? That's exactly the point I was saying. If I have a forty-acre lot, and their developer goes in there and develops ten percent of the lot, all high-density, three-level-high units, okay? Which, that means another developer can come back there later and increase that.
Yes.
Right.
But remember, your first developer, he's only building on ten percent of the lot, and he can only build ten percent of the units that are allowed on the overall lot, because he's only got ten percent of it. So when another, so what you're describing now is just phasing. This chunk is built first, and then this chunk, and then this chunk. But it's all built up to a maximum of fifteen units per acre. And that's not really different. All three of those chunks were built at the same time.
So, from this town's perspective, what's most advantageous for this town? To have a larger overlay district or a smaller?
I would, a smaller overlay district. I would recommend having a zone, the number of acres you need, so that when built at, if it was built out at fifteen units per acre, you'd get to your one eighty-seven. Works out to twelve, or something works out to about thirteen.
And the other question is, all the sites that we have are pretty much are pretty much open, natural space. I've been told, I haven't seen real legal language, but if you accept this bylaw, this overlay law, you cannot have mixed use. And whether they have changed that policy or not, but that's what I learned, you cannot have mixed use. You, and then, then you add in the other factors about developer. Our legislators, every year, every three years, increases the building code, which adds costs to all this.
The rule you're thinking of about... I'm sorry, repeat what you just said before, the building code. Repeat what you just said before, your point about the building code.
About the increasing the building code, adding more costs, they keep changing it. It's becoming more restrictive.
And before that, you were making another point?
I was talking about mixed use.
Yes, okay, the rule was that you couldn't require mixed use. You could always allow it, but towns were not allowed to require it. They then, the state got so much pushback that they changed their rule. You can now have an area in which you require mixed use. And that can, you can use that. You can always allow it.
You don't have to require it, but we can allow it.
You can always allow it, but the rule was requiring it. There were towns that wanted to require it, because they wanted to put their MBTA communities district on their main street. But they didn't want to see their commercial main street get wiped out and replaced by residential. So they wanted to require them to put storefronts on the first floor with the residents above. And originally, the state said no. They eventually came and said, "Okay, you can have that be part of your district, and you can meet up to twenty-five percent of your units there."
Exactly my point. Pittsburgh, downtown Main Street, vacant storefronts. Those properties have been there for a hundred and fifty years, paying taxes every year. The people that own them can't afford to upgrade them and improve them. Why can't they, those upper levels, be called, make up this affordable...
Pittsburgh has thousands, is on the hook for thousands of units, and they have done that. They have rezoned basically downtown.
Well, that's what they're trying to do, okay? So why do they have to come to Townsend? When it's right there, all the services are there, all the commercial spaces there. They have the infrastructure there, the sewer, the water, the power, and the train.
Yeah. This bill was much better, was clearly written for the conditions in eastern Massachusetts. We don't think it's very well-written for in northern Massachusetts. Especially the rural communities.
And the other point is, you have to understand that people that live in Townsend choose to live in Townsend. They could have chose to live in an urban area. They could have chose to live in a suburban area. And they could chose to live, and they chose to live in a rural area. So, that is an infringement on what we bought our property for, what we decided, why we wanted to live in Weston versus Halifax. So, all of it is just not thought out properly, you know?
And so we have to give up any discretion and figure out a way to deal with it. And that's what I'm here for tonight.
So just to clarify, so even though I clearly read that it's a minimum fifteen units per acre, but you're saying that it could be a single-family house, a duplex?
Yes, listen, it's fifteen units per acre. The requirement is that you zone to allow people to build up to fifteen units per acre. You cannot have your zoning limit your multifamily housing to less than that. People have to be allowed to build up to fifteen units per acre. But as you already know from all of your zoning, people don't have to build up to the maximum. If you have a ten-foot side yard setback, people are allowed to build twenty feet further away. If you have a district in which multifamily buildings up to six units are allowed, you can put in a two-family.
Because I remember somebody was here, I forget who was here, talking about that. And I specifically asked, would a, like a duplex count towards that housing? And I was told, no.
I wasn't there for the conversation.
So this is, District of Reasonable Size have a minimum gross density of fifteen acres per, fifteen units per acre.
That's the zoning you have, that's what your zoning must allow. Your zoning must allow that.
Subject to any further limitations imposed by Section forty of Chapter one thirty-one, and Title V, which one will it? Of the State Environmental Code established pursuant to Section thirteen of Chapter twenty-one A.
So you have, your zoning has to allow people to build up, build at that density. But zoning doesn't require people to build at the maximum that they're allowed to.
So our zoning can just allow for all of this?
Yes.
Doesn't mean it's going to happen. They still have to come before and get a permit. They still have to do Title V. And they still have the aquifer protection area and all that stuff.
Yeah, although, aquifer protection area, that's, okay, that's one limitation. And I explained this in the memo I wrote about your site plan review. You cannot have any local zoning that imposes a special permit. Not just, you can't make multifamily in this zone by special permit. If you put your zone somewhere, like in a water supply protection district, where anything that goes there needs a special permit, you've now made your MBTA zone require a special permit for multifamily housing, and you can't do that.
This generates another problem.
Okay, but zoning can allow for all these things without a special permit?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with a special permit issue. That makes sense, okay? What I do have a problem is, when I look at the three sites that we're going to be recommending to our town, they're the most, they are the optimum sites, the best real estate in the town for future growth. It's been scrutinized on location, and proximity to this, and the aquifer, all right? So, we're putting that all aside. The most desirable property that would make for quality, high-end housing, I would imagine, here. When somebody else in the future, when that's all developed, is going to be dealing with all the conservation, and the aquifer, and everything else that everybody else has to deal with. So, I'm like, what are we doing here? And how do we plan the future of our town, you know?
Robert, I'm not sure I know what you're saying. Because these are the three parcels that we selected.
That's right.
Okay? They are on the Lunenburg Line, which is one of the reasons, right?
There were a lot of pros and cons of these sites, I understand that.
But it's only the zoning.
But what bothered me, okay? We sort of were consulted in this direction, okay? Based upon information that was available then. What disturbs me now, is I just heard tonight that they're modifying the policy, when all of this has been based on what we originally understood. So, what does that mean? All right? So, in the beginning, one of the sites that we considered was on the east end of town.
Yeah, but it's because of the aquifer, and the water department was not in favor of that. So when the feedback comes back from your departments, I agree that something should have been done there, mixed use, okay? Would have been awesome.
Well, we already have commercial down there, we already have water down there, we already have mixed use, which would be ideal for people to go, instead of driving in their cars, or ride to Pittsburgh or somewhere else to get their groceries, you know?
But it's in the aquifer district and requires a special permit?
It's not in the, it's not in the high-tier aquifer either. And really, we have to deal with the aquifer no matter where we go, all right? No matter what we do, all right? So it's a matter of the cost associated with dealing with the aquifer. And so, now we've given this prime property that has the least amount of regulatory resistance, that's virgin, most of it's virgin land, when we could have collected different parts of our town to get that one hundred and eighty-seven units.
So there is one, that's, you can't, you can only go just so far with that. There are requirements about the district, at least fifty percent of it has to be contiguous. See, you have to have at least one big, you can have one big one, and then some other.
Tell me why? Why? Why does it have to be contiguous?
And also, there are minimum sizes for each parcel, but you are, I think you end up with fewer acres than the... but you are, I think you end up with fewer acres than the minimum, than the minimum size. Um, the contiguity, once again, make, the contiguity ru- rule makes a lot of sense if you're talking about a, uh, a communal rail community. And B, it even makes sense if you're talking about the, uh, about an eastern Massachusetts suburb, which is largely built out like that. I, look, look, it is a waste of our time for us to sit here and talk about how this law could impact.
Good.
But I can.
Um. I just, I just had one question, one F. What is it, uh? Parking?
Oh, yes. Yes, the language had said one parking space shall be provided for each dwelling unit. I changed that to at least one parking space shall be provided.
No, well, because it was F one and F two, because F one says at least one parking space shall be provided for each dwelling unit. And then F two says no parking area shall contain more than one parking space per bedroom per unit.
Per bedroom.
So I don't get the difference between the two.
Uh, the second one is, is about parking is, uh, uh, they build the two-bedroom unit.
All right, so which is dwelling unit?
What?
A unit, an apartment, say a one-bedroom or two-bedroom or three-bedroom.
Right.
Okay, so then what is it? For, what's the difference between, that's what I didn't understand. The difference between that F one and F two.
If you have two bedrooms, you need one for each bedroom, parking space for each bedroom.
F one's a minimum, F two's a maximum.
Yeah.
And there, F one is a minimum, you're going to provide one.
One.
Or more, uh, park, parking spaces per unit. But how high can you go? If you build a four-bedroom unit, you can pro- provide four spaces for that unit. People with two bedrooms.
I guess I still don't.
You can provide two spaces.
Between the two, but, okay.
So does the town have control on that or not?
Uh, it has town in terms of drawing the zoning, what it wants.
So what's a dwelling unit, just a one-bedroom?
I'm sorry.
The, the town has control over its zoning, over what rules it puts in its zoning.
How many unit, uh, parking spaces?
Yeah, how many parking spaces you want per unit.
All right, so that applies to this fifty-foot setback from the street or?
Yeah.
So we have control on that too?
This is your zoning, this zoning bylaw that you'd be adopting.
For bedroom.
You have control over how it gets.
Bedroom unit in a.
And then these re- these rules would apply.
Well, why does this, uh, here?
Is it enough as one dwelling?
The following dimensional standards shall apply.
Oh, 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 the red, okay. So there had been a previous doc, a previous version of this bylaw written, um, by, um, uh, um, someone in my office, Jonathan. Um, the red are my changes since then.
Your changes?
Yes, my changes since then.
Now, these are your recommendations?
Yes, these are my, yes, these are my recommendations. And I'm recommending this in order to not lock in
All right, I kind of.
The large, the large multifamily building campus type of developments. And allow, um, smaller types of, uh, development.
All right, so let's just take the first one, frontage exception.
Yeah, John, yes, Jonathan had entered this frontage exception.
Ten feet?
It, there, uh, no, that, it doesn't say frontage exception ten feet. It says frontage exception and there's nothing there. Uh.
Might say ten feet.
No, that's a second problem. Yours says setback from street ten feet.
On the table.
What are we talking about? And am I confused or?
On the left side of that ta- table you're looking at, it says lot requirements. And on the right side, it says setback requirements. So that ten feet, you're looking in the setback column where it says setback from street ten feet, front yard setback ten feet, side yard setback ten feet.
Right.
But over to the left and the lot requirements, there was a frontage exception. Um, I am recommend, I, I had, that's the question that I had asked about. Uh, this concept of a frontage exception, Jo- I think Jonathan was going to introduce it, um, largely for the same purpose that, uh, of, of, uh, not ness- of not locking in the giant multifamily style of development. Um, I think we can take that, uh, I didn't know exactly what it meant and had asked to get some fe- um, some co- um, commentary back from people who've been working in town and they didn't seem to know either. So I'm just knocking that out. I don't think we need a frontage exception, we just have the frontage requirements.
Which we currently have fifty feet.
Two hundred in Townsend. Then setback.
Oh, this is what we said, right?
Setback is, is what it is, fifty feet from the road.
That's current.
Current.
Right.
Yeah.
And then down here in red, ten.
I don't have red.
Didn't print it out.
Fifty there, ten here.
Yes.
Single family and two-family, and this is apartments and multifamily, they're two different dwellings.
Right, this is the heart of what I'm coming to, 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 um, show, introduce to you tonight. I'm recommending two sets of dimensional regulations, one for multifamily.
Okay.
And one for single and two-family.
Okay.
Okay, if somebody's building, multi-fa- wants to build in the big multifamily campus style, we need one set of rules, largest, larger setbacks and whatnot. But if they're building single and two-family small lot homes, then we want then a second set of, uh, 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 dimensional standards would be more appropriate. And it'd be, uh, for example, say you have, you were talking about a three-story tall, um, twenty thousand square foot multifamily building with, you know, say it's a twenty or twenty-four unit building or something. Yes, you're not, you're not going to want that ten feet off the street.
Right.
Some, now, somebody builds a little house, a single or a two-family house with a front porch. You don't need that to be fifty feet back off the street. And as a matter of fact, if you impose these big fifty-foot setbacks and stuff, you're not going to be able to put a little house on a lot, on a little lot. And you'll be creating that type of development.
If we took our districts and planned them for tiny homes with lower setbacks and requirements, would that qualify?
Um, the rule, uh, would you be able to satisfy your MBTA communities law with that? No, MBTA communities law specifies that you have to allow multifamily housing at a density of fifteen units an acre. That has to be something that's allowed. So we have to allow, uh, multifamily housing.
In that, if you were doing mixed use, would you be able to do like a cul-de-sac of tiny homes in that development, mixed either multifamily, single homes and tiny homes?
When you say, uh, would you be able, you mean would a developer? Who's building in this multifamily overlay district? Yes, a both developer would be able to choose if they wanted to, to do a project that has multifamily, two and single family homes in different parts.
All right, so let's take the forty-acre lot at the end where Lunenburg line is. Town designates that the meeting, the MBTA programs. I don't like the MBTA program, but the law is there, the town approved it. So I go and buy the forty acres and I put in tiny homes.
Legal. The town has, the town has met all of its requirements under the law. The town is required to zone. And.
There we go.
Whatever anybody does on that lot is.
Up to them.
It does not have to be multifamily housing at fifteen units an acre. It can be other things.
That I can.
So the, but, but, if I may ask the board, is the fundamental concept that I'm offering here? That we should not lock developers into the large multifamily campus style?
Yes.
And should, uh, uh, we at least leave a pathway for them to build, um, smaller, more human scale styles? And the way, and how about my strategy for doing that? Which is to have two sets of dimensional regulations, one for multis and one for singles and twos.
Right.
Are we, are, okay, so everything is on?
Yes.
Correct me.
I'm not sure about the, um, maximum coverage, uh, excuse me, minimum lot size at six thousand square feet. How are you going to do that with septic systems?
That's right.
You, you know, we had, it's funny you should ask that. I, uh, was sitting with, uh, with my boss, uh, uh, who's done a lot of, uh, planning in rural communities. And she did the exercise, what's the smallest lot I could possibly put a house on and meet the setbacks and everything for septic? And she came up with something ridiculous, like she could build a single-family home with septic on thirty-four hundred square feet. It was like, come on.
No way.
It's, I mean, so, I mean, they, it, I wouldn't entirely rule out that somebody could put a single-family home on six thousand square feet with, with, uh, septic. It would be tough.
A tiny home maybe.
It would be, it would, it would have to have.
System.
Right.
Yeah. Have to limit the footprint and limit the bedrooms and stuff. But who builds two-bedroom, single-family homes?
One.
Which is?
Who builds two-bedroom, single-family homes anymore? So if, yeah, I I, if that six thousand, I, I wanted that number to be lower than the number for the multifamily. We're trying to make this path route, we're trying to make this route, uh, appealing for developers.
If you have a multifamily or an apartment-style building and they, there's going to be multiple units, you are not going to get, I do not believe, a four-bedroom property, whether it's, I don't know, uh, two or four-unit building on eight thousand square feet. You need a separate septic for that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yes, I, it, I think in a sense, a lot of these, um, minimum lot sizes are going to be swamped by the septic, by the need for the septic.
Yeah. So in this forty-acre parcel, even though it sounds like a lot of land, I think we should allow for these things, but we have to be more realistic on what you're going to need for lot size. I mean, this, this property is set up so that somebody's going to have to put a road in. Obviously, a developer has to come in and what's going to be the best use of the property as a total? And then look at sections of it, whether it's five acres here, ten acres there, you know, seven acres here for different uses. But you, you're going to have to have those kinds of, um, acres to be able to accommodate something that's not public sewer. Now, the one thing about down there, it, one of the talking points was it's next to Lunenburg. Now, I don't know how far the pipes are for sewerage, but you've got two choices there, either Pittsburgh or Lunenburg for tie-ins.
Yep.
And that'll allow for, for more, um, housing if he goes that way, but it's going to be infrastructure.
The big, the big, what are the big things here too?
Pittsburgh, yeah. Uh, Lunenburg, I don't know.
I mean.
What do you do with your own wells?
I think everybody in town.
They can do well, I mean.
Acknowledged the affordable housing crisis, okay? Or housing in general crisis.
Yeah.
I think everybody in town wants to do something.
Whatever.
It's, the whole way this came down is a mandate.
If it doesn't matter.
No, wait, wait, it does matter, okay? Will you?
That's it.
Wait, hold it, let me finish. So we sit here now talking about realistic stuff, about tiny homes and lot sizes and septic, okay? And helping us to decide what to recommend to the town here. The thing that scares the out of me is another government, another time can give us another mandate saying, you have to put in a septic system, you have to provide the water, otherwise we're going to take your state funding away. That's exactly what happened here. And what I see now scares me to death because they legislature already approved funding for developers. So here we are thinking, well, this won't happen quickly.
It won't happen here. It won't happen quickly. The money's already funded for other areas and that's a lot of money.
I'm, I'm just telling people, I don't trust any of that.
Okay, you don't have to trust it. If we don't pass something, they're going to mandate it. And we won't have a choice. We won't be able to sit here as a planning board and say, oh, but our zoning says we can allow this.
Yeah.
Okay, we won't be able to do this. They're going to mandate what we can do and what we can't do.
Somebody asked another question, because I've heard on the news off and on that this MBTA whatever goes before these towns and it gets voted down and I'm not.
There is a law case right now.
It, I'm not sure what.
There's eleven towns fighting it right now.
Yeah, but I know that they, I mean, every time it comes up, I hear they voted down, they voted down.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, you're probably, you're only hearing about the ones that get voted down because that's controversial and a big deal.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're, many, many more communities have passed.
I, I know.
That doesn't make the paper, because zoning amendments in generally statewide, it's.
But they, they don't let us.
Those places are building.
Do what makes sense for our town, do you understand?
No, I do, I do understand and I've got my own criticisms.
Right.
I just.
And so there is no give, there's no give and take. The town benefits zero from it all. I mean, we get no benefit from any of this, other than you'll be able to keep your state funding. And we just had found out that the state hasn't even subsidized our transportation for our school, which was promised when they found it. So, I mean, so you can't, you can't rely on.
We can't, but you know what, we're going to have to, we're going to have to do the zoning.
We, we need zoning.
Right.
We need zoning that we can have.
Right, so getting to that point, getting to that point of the three lots that we have, should we be thinking about the smaller lot or the forty-acre lot?
I'd like to point out that you don't have to zone by lot lines. If you ended up at forty acres because you just thought you had to take this guy's entire land and include it in the zone, you don't.
You don't?
No, the zoning boundaries don't have to follow lot lines.
No.
All right. That makes a big difference to me. We just have to provide for a hundred and seventy.
Enough to seventy-eight. There, there, there is a minimum size for towns and the, uh, uh, that, uh, i- for different categories. And there's minimum numbers of, um, uh, units that you have to provide.
And so much of it has to be contiguous.
Yes.
Or, and it can be spotted as well.
No.
Contiguous and spotted.
You can have some that's scattered about, but it mostly needs to be, but i- it mostly needs to be contiguous.
Wait a minute, when did that change?
That's not a change.
No, I, I've heard, I'm repeating what I.
It's, it's, it's just that yours, your requirement is so small that having multi-sites wouldn't really make, wouldn't really make sense.
Make any sense.
There's a min- there's a minimum size that any district needs to be, which I think is fifteen acres. And I think you can meet at, at fifteen units an acre that, I think you meet yours at less than fifteen acres. You, 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 you get up to your number, so.
Right, we need twelve acres to get a hundred and seventy-eight units.
If we pass the zoning bylaw, we as a board have identified some properties, but that doesn't mean it can't be another property.
Right.
Right, uh, well.
The zoning bylaw will apply to the town, it's not going to apply specifically.
Well, you have to have.
To one area, right?
Well, you have to have, no, we have, you have to rezon a district. You have to pass a bylaw and then you have to rezon a district that, that bylaw applies to.
You have to change the zoning with an overlay district.
Okay.
And we should do it for the minimum we need to do and say our hand varies.
I can, I can.
Yes, okay, he's been waiting patiently.
Yes.
Two, two, two points. Point number one is when, when, um, you and I were part of a discussion about another parcel on what we were going to put there and we talked about multi-use, which meant we were thinking of putting one building in with several units, another one, maybe single-family homes, another one with cluster housing. Right, that's kind of what I see here. I don't see it being, you know, a six-story, tenement building kind of thing. Or what did you call it, uh?
A high-rise?
Not a high-rise, but a, like a campus.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, campus housing, something like that. That's number one. You know, campus housing, something like that. That's number one. Number two is, it you know, the the, I understand everything that you're saying. It's very, very important for you to bring those points out. But we need to look at the task at hand, and the task at hand is quite simply to write, you know, to write zoning. That you you as as a board can put in there. That's that's your option. That is your choice to get it zoning in so that you guys are happy with it. Yes, the state is gonna do what they wanna do, and I wanna enter into that. But more more importantly is this, we had uh we had been faced, the the planning board was faced to put in um zoning bylaws for. Um another, another thing, I'm afraid to bring it out, but we weren't really sure how to do it, so we wrote two different sets. Of bylaws for this particular issue. And depending upon what got passed by the town was the was the zoning that we put in there. Do you remember that? So really, that's that's what you guys are tasked at, is to assume that this is what's gonna happen and and what would be the best. Fit for the town. That's what I think the planning board needs, that's the focus we can get at.
Well, I think we just figured it out. In any one of these areas, we just sign a small amount of acreage to meet.
For the overlay district.
Right.
Yeah.
Not the whole district that we were talking about.
But the zoning can be. Basically open to allow for things to happen, should somebody have the money to do that.
You're right.
Right.
You know, cuz you're talking about.
I feel more confident now.
Yeah.
Yes, that's.
So my next question. If I'm correct, is a minimum district size, is that correct?
Yes, there's a minimum district size, and I'm I'm afraid, look, I didn't come here tonight prepared to talk about the maps. I was wa- uh operating under the assumption that the map decisions had largely been made. And it was just gonna be the town choosing from among these three sites.
Yeah.
And I haven't done a lot of studies, so um I would like to get back to you um to report exactly what your minimum requirements are. Um in turn, in terms.
That would be great. That would be awesome.
Well, the back of this has.
Oh, please.
Has the lot size and what it has and blah, blah, blah.
Right, yes, this is, this is our analysis. This isn't uh, but this doesn't include the requirements.
What do you mean? Oh.
This is this.
From the state.
Right, it does, yeah, it doesn't, uh yeah, well, I'm thinking, what I'm thinking of now, maybe you, maybe you have something in there from a previous document. That uh you uh that has council's requirements, if you have.
So it shows you how many, what the capacities would be, right?
Right, and they come out well over what you what you need, don't they?
Right.
Multi-family has to be three eighty-four, one eighty-five, and five ninety-six. Yeah, those, I mean.
So district two meets everything.
Yeah, we don't wanna give them five ninety-six cuz they might just build that.
District two gives them everything.
They will. I worked for the federal government for like fifty years.
If you like district, the location of district one better, then just zone part of it.
Oh, zone part of it.
If you're.
You're gonna have to zone the whole thing.
If you're 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 worried about maintaining your economic development property, zone the back.
What?
It's a minimum. In other words, this one right here does it all.
Yeah, but this one over here, or whichever one, this one over here, doesn't mean we have to do forty.
You could do ten.
We only have to zone.
Twenty, you could cut it in half.
Twenty. This one is, uh what's this one, twelve? This one's twenty-six.
Zone the part that's the least impact.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the for for example.
Okay.
District one, which is your outline commercial, I found it very strange that you were, that you choose your um a a commercial district like that. Uh if you wanted to give it a really like district one, maybe cut it in half um vertically and rezone this back's half. That has its frontage back here. And leave the front and leave the acres that's along Fitchburg Road still developable for your commercial.
Why, why wouldn't that be commercial?
This is commercial, but it's paved, it's sewn, so it's not like commercials.
Outline commercial.
That's right.
Yeah.
Your backyard, Bob.
I thought it was Zegler.
No, it's not. He's not near Lunenburg.
I'm kidding.
But this is Lunenburg here, right? This is Lunenburg, and this is Fitchburg Road, you know?
And Old City Road, I think, yep.
Right here, oh, okay, oh, yeah. That is zone commercial, sorry. So, for example, if you were only to rezone half of that district, maybe keep the frontage along Fitchburg Road commercial. And try to have the back be residential, your your multifamily overlay zone.
Nothing would have to be done then.
Say what?
But that's not a bad idea.
I think it's a good idea.
You never know, you could put condos back there or something.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I look, frankly, you know, you're, you're you know, these, I I told you, I haven't made a serious study about these cuz I I thought, I I didn't think that was something that needs to be done, you know, so.
If that makes you happy, cuz for me, it really, it, I don't care. If that makes you happy, we'll do twenty acres in the back with giving, and twenty acres is a lot of land.
It's more than we need.
Options in the zoning.
I would, I would, I would recommend now, let me get back to you, examine, examine these properties, figure out best ways to cut the back. And I can give you, I I I I can lay out your options for you, give you some recommendations.
That would be good. That would be great. Do you wanna come back on the twenty-fourth or?
Yeah, I'm here, okay.
I'm so relieved.
This is more than a two week thing. I mean, I wanna come back next month.
Okay.
Because I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna be coming out of here with several uh ta- tasks.
And we are looking at December thirty first for a deadline, so it's a fall meeting.
Right.
So we need to be done by September cuz we also need public care. Okay?
Well. I feel.
A lot better. I can, I can see it in the face.
As a planning board, I can recommend something, I feel comfortable with.
Yeah, great job, Robert. It was worth all the hearing.
Yeah.
Very good. And a lot of people talk, see, let me get something better.
Yeah.
So, uh if we, uh if we could, uh if we could just go through this.
Okay.
I might need to give your questions, uh all right.
I didn't know.
I've added a little bit, I've added some definitions, I've taken out some definitions, speak there where it is duplicative. Where your zoning already has that definition, um like building coverage, multifamily housing, uh residence dwelling, it's already defined. So that's not, okay, uh substantive change, workforce unit, also known as a dwelling unit. A multi-family dwelling unit that is subject to, I took out the word multi-family.
Where are you?
Oh, I'm now on.
C sixteen?
I'm C sixteen.
C sixteen?
Yep, the definition, uh if. If this site gets built out with two families. You know, we want the uh, we we want the um affordable requirement to apply to that as well. So it's, so I changed that definition.
This is probably somebody's had nothing better to do than come up with a new name.
It's supposed to be easier to sell to the public.
Want a workforce?
Yes.
Do you know that the the Carol Affordable Unit is really workforce? Because the majority of people that are in affordable units are police, fire, teachers. It's workforce, it's basic workforce, workforce, it's what they.
Really?
Right.
Teachers especially.
My police, my cousin's a police officer. I don't know much what he's been.
Depends on how long.
So, moving down to D, under permitted uses, um where uh resident uh. Apartments, multifamily buildings, and two-family dwellings are allowed by right in the multifamily overlay district. Um and single family homes are allowed by right in the underlying districts, so I didn't need to allow them by right by here. But I've just added that two-family dwellings are allowed by right.
That's not saying that two family, what's the difference between? Apartments slash multifamily means.
That's your, that's your definition. That's the, that's your language in towns and zoning, apartments slash multifamily, multifamily building. Or apartments slash multifamily dwelling.
It should just be multifamily, you don't need to say apartments per se.
Um.
Multifamily would be, could be privately owned.
He used the language out of our, what was it?
Doesn't mean it's right.
So I mean, yeah, we might not, we may wanna change the language.
Can we have a four family, a six family, an eight family? Is that what multifamily refers to?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and and so then why do you need two family?
A two-family is not a multifamily. There's three, there's three land uses here, single family, two-family, multifamily.
Anything over two family is multifamily.
Right, I've been in towns that have uh that also break it out, mo- four to eight, no, wait, three to three to six. Or three and four, and then four, four, four to eight, and then over eight.
Yeah.
Um I'm I'm going with three, say, well, single, two, and multi.
Well, that that coordinates with the building code really, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, next page under E, uh we talked about this, uh um I've got two tables here instead of one. So that we have two sets of dimensional requirements.
Um, that's the table you have, right?
Yep.
Uh, but you're gonna look at um.
At what?
More feasible uh square minimum lot size.
I, yeah, I want, it, but let's talk about each of these.
You're right.
Um so the first one was your multifamily. This is directly from the, and I say your because this, uh all this language in black. Is from the version of the bylaw you've already seen. Um uh that was uh that I, that was, that seemed to be acceptable. Um the only difference I'm making here, the minimum density threshold. There is no reason that for you to require. That it be built at at least fifteen units per acre. You're allowed to do that. Do you wanna?
No.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Okay, I think that was a little, I think.
Right, so that's why you scratched it.
Yes.
Thank you.
We were under the impression that we had no choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
That's right.
Okay, it's almost like this.
Believe that.
You have no choice when you zone. You have to zone for fifteen units per acre. However, the developers, you have to zone to allow fifteen units per acre. The developers have a choice. They don't have to go that high. They can build half as many units if that's what they choose. Um, so the second table, um okay, so uh uh all right, one other thing I'd like to, uh I was supposed to make this change already. I don't have a frontage. I have frontage exception, but I don't, but there's no actual. Lot frontage on this. I think I need to add frontages and on the multifamily housing.
Right.
I, you know, it's, it was, it would have been, it it's what's in the underlying zone. Um.
So, so.
Little lot width is eighty, so let's just make the frontage eighty.
Um.
So our.
Here we have a hundred and fifty feet for single family, two hundred, well, depends what district.
Yes, exactly.
No, we don't, we have a minimum two hundred eight, two hundred feet of frontage. No matter what you're building and no matter what zone you're in. Or your, the acreage changes with uh aquifer. The frontage does not change.
All right, so where are two hundred?
Current, our current zoning bylaws are two hundred feet of frontage.
Yeah, I would strongly recommend against that for this uh.
Yeah, you can't do it, right?
Uh where 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 your minimum lot width is eighty feet, it, let's have the frontage eighty feet. I mean, you can't have your frontage larger than your minimum lot width.
Right.
And I don't think it makes, and uh where, this is the multifamily table, and we're gonna have a separate table for um singles and twos. That it, we don't need to have any, we don't need to have it smaller.
Well, I could do, I'm trying to think.
You could go a little.
Well, think of where we're putting this, though.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of the last big subdivision that was built in town, which is Timberly Park.
Right.
And those were. I wanna say they were only fifty. It couldn't have been, could have been seventy-five to a hundred feet of road frontage. And then a half acre lot. So that's twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So about a hundred by two hundred, let's say, average. So you would be talking, and I'm just trying to think. Um, you could get on that size lot, you can do a four-bedroom septic system. Okay, so. Um, you could do a two-family home on that if you're, what are we in now? We're in the apartment multifamily.
No, you're down a single family.
Down.
No, we're still in the apartment multifamily.
And we're trying to think about a frontage number.
That would be.
For the multi's.
Okay.
Okay?
Um, I'm gonna go with a hundred.
Well, your minimum lot size is, your minimum lot width is eighty.
By who's, by who, who's the minimum lot width?
The the one that's on, that uh it on 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 the page right now, the uh the version that uh that that I inherited.
Oh, I see.
Minimum lot width. Right, so the frontage should be.
Should be, but you know, you can't set a higher frontage than minimum lot width.
Right. Well, it depends, you know, frontage means the street frontage. So you can have a lot that's eighty feet deep and wider than eighty.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So it depends what you're envisioning.
Your hundred for frontage.
I think a hundred by a hundred.
A hundred by a hundred is ten thousand square feet. We're setting the, this minimum lot size is eight thousand square feet. So I think eighty by a hundred. To to fit the uh to to just just be consistent.
What if there's no public water? What if there's no public water? Septic has to be.
Then they're gonna blow through.
A hundred feet.
Then they're gonna blow through all of these dimension requirements and build much larger.
No, but. If you use the minimum that he suggested eighty, then that gives some flexibility in the lot. As to adept for topography, for conservation. Or for aquifer or for anything else, so you're not gonna have a pre-described lot profile.
Yeah, but you're not gonna be able to put a septic in a well on the lot.
That, uh hey, if septic makes the uh uh it doesn't allow them to build. At this density, they have, that's not your problem.
That's right.
That's fine.
Right, it's not our problem is, you know, they'll have to rent porta potties.
I know.
I mean, this is like.
But but what if, what if they do?
What's that this something?
What if they do bring the septic? What if somebody brings up the septic from Lunenburg and somebody wants to build multifamily?
Then you're okay.
Yeah, but uh and, but if they don't, but if they don't. It doesn't hurt anything to have an eighty-foot minimum lot frontage, and you're saying, oh, but they won't actually be able to build. A uh on an eight thousand square foot lot with eighty feet of frontage, okay.
Right.
Then their lots are gonna be bigger than that.
We always have to remember, there's no such thing or very few actual rectangular lots.
If that's the zoning, they can go higher than the zoning. But they can't go less than the zoning.
Right, uh the, right, that, right, if you said eighty, they could always build a two hu- a hundred-foot frontage. They couldn't build a seventy-foot frontage.
Okay, so this is minimum.
Yeah, these are minimums, yes, dimensional standards, these are minimums.
I don't have a problem with the eighty.
Yeah, it won't work.
Minimum.
Not if you need both, both those things done on a lot. It's not gonna work. You have to be a hundred feet away. A well has to be a hundred feet away from a septic.
No, this just says it's the minimum lot width, not what the lot will be.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, but you have, I see what Laurie's saying, should you have the, you you have a front yard setback and you have side yard setbacks as well.
Yeah, but the fifteen is what we have now.
Yep.
The twenty is okay, we have fifty.
But if you have a frontage except in, except, exception of eighty with a minimum lot width of eighty. What actually you're working on for a footprint with a front yard setback of thirty?
The thing here that we're not thinking about, we're talking about the dimensional standards for multifamily complex.
Yeah.
Right, so there's no way you're gonna have multifamily complex on eight thousand square feet.
Right, somebody would, these dimensional requirements, somebody could come in and try to put a three-family on eight thousand square feet. Good luck.
No way, all right, and then you got the parking and everything else, so.
Yeah.
So keeping these.
Well, you could if you did uh three stories.
It's wide.
Um, yeah.
Like in Wolfam, you ever go Wolfam? The house is this wide.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This wide, that wide.
Well, again, these are all the developers, he knows the minimum and he knows.
Fifty feet.
What the requirements are, so it looks good from a. What the requirements are, so it looks good from a developer's standpoint. And again, if we, a developer goes in there and wants to do tiny homes. That's gonna help them.
Yep, yep.
Alright, I'm good with that. Yes, good.
Alright, eighty.
And then we get down to the second uh table. Alright, these are for singles and twos. Um, probably once again, um too optimistic about the uh about lot sizes and if they have to do septic, they're not really gonna be able to.
You can't do a forty foot width.
No, you uh you could, right, uh if you could have a single family home in uh. Where a narrow deep lot.
The Panhandle lot.
Uh and a single family home with a narrow deep lot and uh the the parking coming off of an alley. And parking in the backyard as opposed to the um uh driveways coming up um uh from the front.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Picture a block with houses that are facing to both ways and down the middle of the block. Uh where everybody's real lot lines meet, it's a lane and then people's driveways are off that, so they're parking in their backyards and sending their front yards. They don't have a garage door facing out to the front. They don't have a driveway and a big curb cut taking away the on the street spaces.
Right.
So.
There are ugly alleyways.
Yeah.
With all the trash cans and everything else. Yeah, those are horrible.
Nobody's gonna do that, no worries.
Yeah.
Uh, it it, yes, small, I mean, I, what I was thinking here is how, in in traditional neighborhoods, you know, eight um. Nineteenth century neighborhoods that have little workers cottages, singles and twos.
Right.
Okay, I was working off of that uh that 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 run where blocks like that exist.
I know.
Where I came up with these, these dimensions. Um.
This is gotta be like setback from the street. Twenty, ten feet's horrible. Twenty feet. Is. Not that bad. Like you could pull your car in.
Barely does a car. That's why we have a standard point five.
Side, side lock, side yard you can.
If you get little, um if uh you know, you're building single family homes and two family homes on small lots. You don't want the little area, the front yard with the cars parked in it. It's different if a, a. Uh uh suburban or rural, you know, acre lot or something where somebody's driveway is. You know, sixty feet and it goes up to the house, that's fine. But in a neighborhood where you have houses next to each other on these little lots. Parking in the front, front of the house is a bad look. See, it's bad design. You want people, you want the driveways to go beside the house. And people parking basically in their side yard, not in their front yard.
Okay.
And me, and meanwhile, ten feet off the street, for the facade, that allows somebody to put a front porch and. Yeah, yeah, a a prof, I, it, yeah, it's a different type of neighborhood.
So if they were, if the houses are built close to the street.
Mm-hmm.
So you'd have to have like an access driveway behind the house for parking.
Or 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 you just have.
No yard.
Or you just have, or or you have the driveway take up the side yard.
You have enough for a driveway in the back?
I agree.
Well, not if you build it, not if you build it at at forty feet, but if they were, if they were doing that, they they probably could why, they. Build the the lots wider than forty feet.
And I think, oh, I see minimum versus.
Yes.
Realistic, okay.
Okay. Minimum versus reality.
So.
Okay.
Let's think for a minute. Let's ask you to think for a minute about. If a developer chooses this track that you like better for the building ones and twos on small lots, okay? A small lot, see, I live in a small lot, single family neighborhood, actually. Uh my block is all single families. On about five thousand square feet.
Really?
We all have off-street parking.
I know.
Off-street parking? You all have off-street?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep, we all have a little side lane beside the house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And.
What's the age?
Oh, it was built in the twenties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like bungalows and stuff.
Yeah, I I live in a Preston bungalow.
Yeah.
Front porch.
Yeah.
And you know, and the shea shakes.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
That was, I had a house like that in North Dakota. And you, there was a back alley and you parked in the back and.
It's a different.
You think we should have that here?
I think it's great.
Uh, well, I think that that's more desirable than the multifamily campuses. Then what, I I want, yeah, I I I want.
How many square feet is the house?
My house is just under eighteen hundred, so.
Mine was fifteen, yeah.
Uh, yeah, two stories. Two stories, and then there was a small addition on the back to add a um. It's actually an office, but it counts.
Actually, it's pretty good, cause it's very manageable.
It's just about exactly five thousand.
Hmm.
Oh, public water, public sewer.
Public water, public sewer.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the only way you could do that.
Yeah. So, uh. If you, if we're talking about that type of building, that type of construction to build that type of place. It can't just be a smaller version of your single family subdivisions. It it, there's a different design principles that have to go into it.
Right.
And uh. So, these and and I and I can tell you that these dimensions that uh that are on here. Have been used to successfully build those streets well.
Hmm.
Being just ten feet off the street, it's not. Like being ten feet off of one of your, you know, miles long. Not, not just a major highway, but even your back roads, even your country back roads, people travel pretty fast on them. And they don't expect any people to be there and things like that. Uh you, you can't be ten feet off that, it's, it wouldn't even be safe. But in one of these neighborhoods, it's. If someone walks down the sidewalk, I'm on my porch, they say hi, and I say hi. You can have a conversation like that.
So you have sidewalks.
It becomes, and then you have sidewalks, it becomes neighborhood. Okay, it's, and now, that's not how you design a large lots rural character subdivision.
Okay.
This isn't going to be a rural character subdivision.
It's gonna be an A-line.
Under any circumstances, whether it gets built single or multi. And so as you're looking at the dimensional requirements for the singles and twos. I I ask you not to let yourself think about your rural. Sort of subdivisions and your rural neighborhoods. Try and to design what would be a good version. Of single two family neighborhoods built in your MBTA district is going to be more like. Anyone ever go to Center Street in Pittsburgh? Beautiful, gorgeous. Uh it's old traditional eighteen nineties walkable neighborhoods. Yeah, and it has to, and I, and I'm designing these dimensional requirements around that aesthetic. Not a smaller.
Did you say?
Center.
Center Street in Pittsburgh.
Yes, it's just off Main Street and it's old houses and they're close to the street. On these little lots, it's this quiet, peaceful.
Concrete walls and a driveway on the side, and the garage in the back and it's a little bungalow.
Neighborhoods, little cottages.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what a good neighborhood at these dimensions is like.
Right.
Okay, alright.
Uh, uh, uh.
So what do you think about the frontage exception then?
It's frontage, I didn't know what frontage exception, what we need here is a lot frontage. Um, I'm inclined to go lot frontage should be the same as lot width.
Should be what?
Lot frontage should be the same as lot width.
Okay.
Same, okay, that would be the same as what we did up above, right?
As the lot width.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same argument we had before.
Yep. Uh, next page, uh, a lot of these were just repeating what's in the table.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't bother, but E one, now, okay.
The shorter the better, actually.
Yeah, now, E one, no building should be uh uh closer than fifty feet to Pittsburgh Road. Now, we've already got these fifty foot, fifty feet um. Setback from street dimensions in the multifamily housing, okay? And the idea was you really want one of these big campuses and stuff, and you wanna maintain a certain buffer, maybe a tree to buffer or something to maintain character.
Well, that's, we have a scenic roads ordinance too that we're trying to.
If if your developer goes in the direction of the small lot singles and twos, you know. What I was just saying about being ten feet from the street, that's ten feet from the street in your neighborhood. That's not ten feet from the main Pittsburgh Route thirteen.
Exactly.
So I would still wanna maintain that fifty.
Okay.
Um, oh, yeah. Not to, not, you know, structure size, not to contain less than three billion units per detached structure, we don't want that anymore. That's, that's the whole point. We want to be, people to be able to go ones and twos. Um, okay, parking. This parking requirement, following parking standards shall apply to apartments, multifamily dwellings within the MFOD. I'm only applying these parking standards to apartments and multifamily dwellings. Your regular parking rules apply to ones and twos.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this makes a lot of sense because A, multifamily, multifamily dwellings tend to have smaller units. Tend to smaller bedrooms, tend to, tend to um produce fewer cars per unit. And B, when you have a multifamily dwelling, you're sharing a parking lot. And so you can take advantage of economy of scale, cause not everybody in the apartment building is gonna have the guests over on the same day.
Hmm.
So, the uh these, these are these looser parking requirements I'm applying to the multifamilies.
Um, oh, why did you?
Well, if a husband and wife.
Well, if you made it.
You're still gonna have two cars.
If you made it one and a half spaces, for example, um. That would be more of a challenge for a developer, wouldn't it?
Well, I mean, the higher you put your parking minimum, the more of a challenge it is for a developer. Well.
More expensive.
I know, but e- even if you have a one bedroom unit, you have a husband and wife both working, they typically each have two cars.
Yeah, today.
Today. And especially out here with this, there's no public, there's no train.
It's a concept here that the occupants of these units. Are. There for short term.
I don't think so.
No.
Um, I mean, I, I, not short term, no, I mean, I bet the tendency in these.
In other words, I've done like singles apartment complexes and stuff and um. The idea is. You're there. Because you're there and, you know, you get a job somewhere else and you're, you know, or um, so.
How many people move today?
How many people are looking for real long-term housing the way you would if you bought a single family home? How many?
I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure it's pure, but I'm not sure what that does for us, because once the, those, the people who are in the, they move out faster. That means somebody else moves in. Well.
Okay, so, let's say a developer goes in there and he's got one and two bedroom units. Is it gonna help him or handicap him not having two parking spaces? And.
You know, I mean.
Leasing and selling.
Might depend on the developer.
Particularly here in Townsend, right, where you don't have public transportation.
Yeah, I I mean, developers would probably want more and they probably put in more than the uh than the zoning cost for. This sets a minimum.
Okay.
It's a minimum, okay, they can put more.
Okay, it is a minimum. Alright, uh.
The six G interior lighting here, I guess here.
We got a new bylaw.
Didn't work.
We already changed that bylaw, so.
So, alright.
Just deal with that.
Um. Though, so the way it says, it reads here, lighting shall adhere to the standards in Article nine, Special Provisions one forty-five fifty-two. That that that, that's still, that's still fine, just to leave it as is.
Yes.
Alright, uh. Um, dwelling units, uh once again, I took out multifamily dwellings, all developments, developments uh that contain ten or more. Uh, ten percent shall be uh workforce units. Then I took out these definitions, cause they're um elsewhere. Uh, you've all seen all of this before until we get to the very last page. Uh. And it's just very minor clerical stuff, so, okay.
It's good.
Okay, do you have any more now?
No, you did a great job. I'm really impressed. I mean, like, you really thought about all this stuff.
I really, I I really did. I really thought it was important to provide. The other group.
Nothing impresses Robert.
I really did think it was important to um provide developers that second track to not just be big, build big and multifamily. And I drew on um my knowledge in different types of communities for what that second track needs to look like.
Right. Are you a member of Community Plans Association?
I know.
Oh. I gotta get you to join.
So. The other document I sent was this memo about your site plan review. Um, you discussed your site plan review issue?
Yeah. Uh.
Yeah, well.
You can't, your site plan review is a special permit, and that's weird.
We're not gonna be doing a special permit here.
And we can't have a special permit for this.
Right.
And yet, you trigger your site plan review and you should trigger your site plan review. Um, uh the the developments that get built up there, um they're uh, they're gonna trigger your site planner. And that's, that's okay, but it can't be a special permit. So I provide, I, you know, I'm just living here.
Yeah.
And it gets to the, and so I see three ways of solving this. The cleanest way would be for me to rewrite your section, your one forty-five forty-two. Into a regular site plan approval section, and you will no longer have your site plan review be special permit.
Right.
It will just be site planner. First of all, before we go further, was was I sufficiently there uh explaining the difference between. Regular site plan review, regular special permit and your site plan review is special permit? Are you clear on what I mean by switching it from a special permit to site plan review?
Yeah, no permit.
Well, there is still, okay, under site plan review.
No, you need a permit.
Permit. The thing and.
No special permit.
You, uh, uh, but they can't really say no. They, uh, when this is site plan review, you basically have to give them their permit, but you give it to them with conditions.
Oh, yeah.
Okay?
Right.
We do that.
That's under site plan.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah, yes. Special permits are issued with conditions all the time. Uh, the difference is, so it works just like that. Uh, the only thing that's different is sometimes special permits are denied.
Sometimes what?
Special permits are denied. And these, and.
You can't deny this.
Right, and you can't deny this. So I could rewrite, I could, if you'd like, rewrite your um. The site plan review special permit into a site plan, a regular site plan review.
Okay, yeah, well, we would look at that.
That would apply to a whole zoning.
Yeah.
All the zoning.
You do all, you do all, like, all of it. I'm talking about rewriting the existing site plan review special permit. Uh, I think you're gonna wanna do that anyway. I think. It's good to have these two different levels of review. Have some things be special permit and some things be site planner view. And the other issue is. Schools and churches and stuff that you're exempt from being able to zone. Uh, are, will tr- trigger your site plan review special permit, and now they're special permit.
Hmm.
So, that's it. So I would recommend doing it that way.
Well, it's interesting, cause I was in a community prior to my moving here. And they wanted everything a special permit. They knew their zoning bylaws were, were not. Realistic for the town.
Mm-hmm.
And I asked them why, they don't adopt zoning bylaws that are appropriate for their neighborhood and the environment. And the answer was, we wanna know everything that's gonna be built in town.
Um, so there's only one problem with. That, one potential problem with this strategy of rewriting your whole special permit sec- um, site plan review. To just be regular site planner here. And that's whether. That could be included in the simple majority MBTA communities vote. So I, uh, I would like, if somebody could ask your time.
Was done now, when you were changing zoning bylaws.
Well. We have.
That was voted at the state.
We have so much in our zoning bylaw now that requires special permit. So now we're talking about this overlay district. And with this overlay district, I think we can do this without any particular issue. But. But there's so many other ordinances in our current zoning bylaw that require special permit.
But if you have that recommendation for us, that's something that we can look at.
Yes, yeah.
Um, if we have to institute, we still have to institute two, then we'll also, I mean, we'll.
As a minimum.
As a bylaw.
As a minimum, we have to eliminate it out of the overlay district.
Yes, right, yes.
Yeah.
No, no, I, I could, uh, I, I could write a separate little site plan review, um, in the overlay, in the MBTA bylaw district that, uh, that it has to go through, which is just regular site planning.
That's right.
And that is.
Otherwise, we have the burden of going through every other bylaw and get that ready to be approved at town meeting and all that stuff, so. Um, so let's just focus on what we need here for the overlay district. Right.
Okay, so, you're basically done now?
Uh, this.
For the city.
Just one last, one last question about how to do that. There are, to only focus on the overlay district, there are two, um, ways that I can do that. One of which would be, we have these last two paragraphs here. One of which would be to have a little, um, site plan review section in the overlay bylaw itself. And the other would be in your existing site plan review bylaw, there are a list of exceptions. I could add another exception to that. But then say in that exception, if for a project in the, um, MFOD, uh, it's traditional site plan review.
So in that general bylaw, we can say accepting the overlay district and be done with it, right?
Um, you know, I could say accepting the overlay district and be done with it. The only problem with that is that would eliminate not just your, um, your site plan review special permit, that would eliminate site plan review entirely. And I think you should retain site plan review.
Right.
So.
Right.
So I just wanted to ask, um.
I think it should be in the bylaw.
Yeah, well, it, in, in the MBTA bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the bylaw for this district.
For the district.
Yes, understood.
So that everything is in that bylaw.
Okay.
So anybody looking to develop there will have everything right in.
Other stuff, yeah.
Okay, cool, excellent, put it in the bylaw, good. Um, and I think then what I would also want to add, uh, just a reference in that list of exceptions, um, a reference to the, uh, MBTA bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but, okay, good, all right. Okay.
Because a reference is a tweak.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't change that bylaw.
Right, and when it's something a little like that, outside the bylaw, but is something small like that, that's just a reference to it, it still falls under the fifty-one percent vote. It's a fifty percent plus one vote.
It does?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. It, it's, things that effectuate the MBTA bylaw in other parts of the, um, bylaw can also fall under that, so. All right, my marching orders, as I understand them, I am going to examine your map and come up with recommendations on, um, on districts and acreage, and, uh, let me know what the minimums are and, uh, what, and, and recommendations for what to do with each district.
All right, so in, in that direction, we're going to those smallest amount we need.
He was gonna even say, if the big class will just take that.
Figure out what that small, small you need is, yes.
So, I'm okay pretty much with what we've come up with now for the general areas of the, where this could happen.
Further refine it down.
I don't wanna go back there because there's so much other acreage.
We're not gonna look at any other districts, I'm just going to, um, figure out what, exactly what your minimum was and recommend how to subdivide your districts.
Right.
If, if.
Excellent, that'd be great.
Okay, and I've gotten your information, yeah, I got your feedback on those dimensional things. So, good.
Okay, uh, seven fifteen on July eighth.
Seven fifteen on July.
Does that work for you?
Yes, on the next week.
It's a Monday.
Wait, wait, wait.
Four weeks.
Let me look at my calendar here. No, that's the week I'm gone. Um, what? I have to tell you, my marching orders are less than I thought they were going to be. I'm, I can come back for that in two weeks. When, when did you say your next meeting is?
Um.
July eighth. Right?
No, the next is the twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth of June, twenty-fourth.
A June?
June.
We have the eighteenth, but that's, that's a joint with the Board of Selectmen, so the twenty-fourth, and I, um.
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah, we have. What, is seven fifteen on the twenty-fourth?
That sucks, mate.
So the twenty-fourth and July eighth, right?
No, I think.
No, he can't come on July eighth, but he'll, he'll get us stuck before the twenty-fourth that we can discuss.
Yeah, it shouldn't be too challenging, right?
I don't think it should be, actually, I think this is a relatively small round of work. And on the twenty-fourth, I'd, um, I think we might, we'd probably be able to make quick work of this.
Okay.
Just, I, I've got something you like, and then I want to talk more about, I also wanna talk about the ADU bylaw.
Oh, thank you, yes.
That, that, that's supposed to be amended for you.
Okay.
I've gotten some feedback, um, yeah, what would, or, would, all right, what would you like, how, what would you like me to do there? Come to you with proposals? Come to you with.
I would, I would like to see people.
A memo like this?
Who own a single family home and want to have an accessory apartment, be able to do that by right if they can get whatever permits they need. And we don't have that in our zoning now.
Okay, but.
Pittsburgh does, a lot of other communities do.
Yep.
Oh, anybody with common sense does.
I know.
Yep. Uh, um.
So.
Okay. Yeah, I, yes, yes, and what, but be prepared, what I come with next time, depending on how things go legislatively, might be a description of what your idea would exist, gotta be based on state law.
Yeah, yes, of course.
I've encountered one situation with this, uh, accessory dwelling unit. It's a section of Pittsburgh that are single family homes and they have it by right. So I had a client that was building a brand new house. So the bylaw was written, assuming you are adding on to an existing house. So.
Oh, yeah.
You, okay.
It's.
Can we, no, can we finish the agenda and then I can adjourn and let Hartley go home, and then if you guys wanna talk, you can?
It's okay.
Because I think you told us the story already.
I did, but he. But he's gonna be looking at that bylaw. It's okay.
Look at what we have now.
Don't worry.
Okay, well, we can discuss it once you have that, okay?
Whatever you come up with, we'll talk about it.
Um, we have a couple of things we're not gonna do tonight, and that is three point two and four point two, because I don't have them. Um, and then five point one is the announcement of the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative on the sixth, eighteenth, and twentieth, that's something that I can do, but it's there.
Um, and then our medicine training, you can sign up.
Training for what?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
I'm glad.
Yeah.
See you on the eighteenth.
If, if I don't have anything to do, I think I might sign up for that zoning. Well, the eighteenth or something.
Okay.
Um, but I have to look and see if, um, if I can do it at the time that they.
Okay, and don't forget we meet on the eighteenth too.
Yeah.
Um, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, uh, nine fourteen. Nine, nine fourteen PM, um, what is today's date?
The tenth.
The tenth.
Everybody remember to vote tomorrow.
Yes, June tenth, twenty twenty-fourth.
Okay. We have all agreed to adjourn.